Good evening, this meeting of the Ontario Board of Education is now called to order. We have a tobacco policy in place. There is no smoking within one hundred feet of any school building. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. District Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Trustee Goodrich? Trustee Story?
Here.
Trustee Ramondo?
Here.
Trustee Michel- Mitchell Morell? Trustee Bishop?
Present.
Trustee Sherry?
Present.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Here.
I would like to welcome the Bennett Principal, Mr. Bono.
Good evening, Board. So good to have you back here. I wanted to start by just acknowledging, I think, Trustee Sherry, you're the only one that's leaving, right? And just thank you for all your time and your service. Please know that on behalf of the Bennett staff, we are very grateful for the time that you volunteered here. So thank you for your term. What do I have for you for an update? I want to just acknowledge, and I know I've done this before, and I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but I am just so grateful for the Bennett PTA and that board. They are tremendous. They were determined to have a carnival this past Friday, and they needed one miracle. And I'd like to thank the Setro Hudson for coming through and restoring our electric for us. We had had a self-set timeline of cutting it off at five thirty, and it looked really, really grim. And they had a contact, and Setro Hudson has said, "Give us five more minutes." And within three minutes, the lights turned on, and it was, it might as well have been New Year's Eve, Friday afternoon at five oh three. So thank you to Setro Hudson. And then everybody that came, it was amazing. I was told that we had three hundred students in the district come to that event, and of course there were adults there as well. And it was a phenomenal time. So thank you to the PTA, the Bennett PTA, because it really adds so much to the climate and culture of this building and the experience for the children. It was a phenomenal party. With that, we also are just wrapping up our school year. I always say, "The school year doesn't wind down, it winds up." And we're trying to complete our year-end assessments of your children and get our data in order, and also have a lot of festivities and celebrations because your children have worked so hard to get to where they're at. And to help me this evening with the board welcome, I've asked the advisor of the garden club to come and her students, but I don't believe her students are going to be able to make it in time. And I've also asked the advisor of our student government. I would like Ms. Amadeo to come on up. She's the advisor of the student government, and the student government officers. They're going to report out on their accomplishments for the year. And I also want to acknowledge, this is the first year where we've eliminated the financial aspects of the student government, and they no longer have a treasurer because we've allocated that responsibility to the PTA. So that partnership has really helped bring the student government and the parents closer together to work to serve this school, and it's just been a phenomenal partnership this year. Ms. Amadeo, do you want to come up and take the lead?
Good evening. Sorry. My name is Bernadette Amadeo, and I'm the Library Media Specialist here at Bennett. This year, I had the added pleasure of serving as the Student Council Advisor. I had no idea what this responsibility entailed, and I knew that I had some big shoes to fill from the previous advisors, but I welcomed the opportunity to spend more time with the kids and take on this role. So we had our first meeting, and I decided to see what the students wanted to do. So we had a meeting, and they made a laundry list of things that they wanted to do. At our next meeting, Ms. Hadley, our Social Studies Instructional Coach, proposed the idea of having Student Council take charge of the Trex Challenge, and they accepted this proposal, and our laundry list of things went to the wayside. You all know about the Trex Challenge. We did a great job. So they worked on this every week, once a week at their recess time. And if I'm being a little honest, I was a bit disappointed that we weren't able to do more of the things on our laundry list, but I'm really proud of what they did accomplish, which was so important. I couldn't be more proud of them. So I invited a few of our members here, and I'm going to start with our President, Todd Faulkner. And he's going to come up and talk about his experience as our student government president.
Yeah, yeah, I'm a little short. Hi, my name is Todd, and this year I was the sixth grade Student Council President. And this year, we were focused on the Trex Challenge. And I'm glad we did, as I got to learn lots of things, including what plastic does to the earth, what we could do to help, and anyone can make a difference. But it also taught me some personal things, like presenting better, but more importantly, it taught me that we are like the last generation that would be able to do anything against the plastic problem. And you don't always have to make a massive leap when you're doing something. It taught me that you're allowed to take baby steps when doing something, like picking up trash on the side of the street when you walk by. This, and it also taught me that it's not about all the big corporations that helped us, like the stores, but the people in the community that helped us do stuff by themselves and spent their time over weekends or weeks to help us get plastic for the Trex Challenge. And that's why I think we won. But I also wanted to thank all the people that helped me get voted for president. I think it was a once-in-a-lifetime experience, as I don't think I'm going to get voted again. But it was a really fun year, and even when we were stressing over the project, it was still a lot of fun to be able to sit in the library and talk with my friends about what to do about the Trex Challenge. And I think that was what made us win, because we were all talking together, and it wasn't us just following the rules of a teacher. It was us communicating. And I could only hope for a better year next year, that next time in September. So I just wanted to thank everybody that voted for me and everybody that helped in the community.
Thank you, Todd. Our next member is Grayson Peltsman. He was the Vice President.
Hello, I'm Grayson, the Vice President of the Student Council. I think that we had a great year, and we worked very well as a team throughout Trex, and we were successful getting a bench and had a great time. It was fun teaching the fourth, fifth, and seventh graders about our plastic. We learned a lot and helped the environment while doing it. I'm glad I got to be a leader here at Bennett Elementary.
Thank you. Thank you, Grayson. We also had co-secretaries this year. Unfortunately, one of them is out, was out sick today, but we have Sommo Canton. He did a great job as our secretary, and he has a few words as well.
See, I'm Sommo, and the Student Council co-secretary. And one of the accomplishments that I think had a big impact on us was like being on the news and being able to spread what we were trying to do to other people and possibly other schools that were probably hesitating to join in. And also, we had this big project planned for a video to spread information to the rest of the students, but we were distracted by other stuff. But we did a lot of stuff in order to plan for the project, which made a big impact on like the students and others. We even, some of the Student Council helped teach fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, and they also teach seventh graders in the middle school. And I'm very proud to be voted as a co-secretary and to be a part of the Student Council.
Thank you, Sommo. And I also want to thank the board, and I want to thank the PTA and families that support our students. Have a good night.
Student Government, Ms. Amadeo, thank you so much for your service this year. Ms. Harkin is the advisor of our garden club, and if you haven't seen our garden, you definitely should. Ms. Harkin, would you come on up?
We have a very artistic garden club, so they decided to make some posters about some of the things they like about garden club. Good evening, I am Ally Harkin. I'm the Speech Pathologist at Bennett Elementary School. Ms. Patruski, who is on leave this year, is my co-advisor. And this is Aleah Olin, a sixth grader and our most senior member. The current version of garden club started in December 2021. At that time, the courtyard and garden beds were overgrown and underused. Since last year, the courtyard, also known as Gary's Garden and Pearson's Place, have gone under a complete transformation, thanks to Ms. Mayone and Bennett's graduating class of 2022. There is still, we are still a work in progress, and Aleah will tell you about some of the things that we did this year.
Garden club is fun for all its members as the club. We have been busy as bees and other pollinators that are frequent our garden. We have learned to read seed packets and how much sun and different water plants need. All the local last frost day, and most importantly, how to weed in the garden. Students report weeding and being outside is their favorite activity. While weeding, we are able to socialize with students in other grades that we wouldn't, would not otherwise see. This has helped us, helped create a sense of community with our small club.
Alright, so in future gardening clubs, we plan to grow things for the school, like plants we can use to turn into dies for the art room and pumpkins. So when the reading teachers help students make literary pumpkins, they don't have to find as many as they normally would. We also will draw our favorite plants or plants that we want to grow on the first day of our club next year and share it with other members. Thank you guys for listening. We're so happy to share our ideas with you and what we've been doing.
Thank you, Ms. P. I didn't introduce Ms. P. Ms. P. is, as you can tell, preoccupied and took a little leave from us, but she came back to support the garden club because she too was a prior advisor, and it sounds like we're going to have her for next year, which is going to be fantastic. I always end with, do you have any questions for me, trustees? If not, have a great board meeting.
Thank you so much, Principal Bono. No questions for Principal Bono? No? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss confidential staff and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first, please? Trustee Lynch, second. Trustee Story, questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. We'll be back in about forty-five minutes.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Um, we're gonna start doing things a little bit differently when it comes to um our roll call. In the entrance of uh transparency, we are going to begin taking a trustee roll call. So for everything past, you know, the opening items, we will ask each trustee to give their um yes, no, or their abstention. And that's in alignment with Robert's Rules of Orders, which is our adopted parliamentary procedure. So. The Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. May I have a first trustee story, a second? Trustee Ramondo, questions or comments from the board? No? Okay. Trustee Lynch?
Yay.
Trustee Bishop?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Yeh.
Trustee Ramondo?
Yay.
Trustee Story?
Yay.
Trustee Goodrich?
Yay.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Cole. Okay, we would like to welcome the Antiora Rocket Club to come and speak to us. They have just returned from a fantastic trip to Washington DC uh where they were recognized for their incredible work this year. Um, so please welcome the Antiora Rocket Club.
Hello. There we go. Thank you for having us. Uh, we are the Antiora Rocket Club and uh my name is Richard Deruvo, high school science teacher, and I have had the pleasure of being the uh co-advisor to the club for the past few years. And uh these boys and actually some of our girls that are not here tonight have um been building and launching and rockets for the past few years of different sizes, getting ready for competition. Last year, we entered into the American Rocketry Challenge. Uh, it is the national challenge at our level and we we uh narrowly missed making it to nationals last year. But this year, we did uh, we did up our game quite a bit and our our echo team, which is roughly about half of the Antiora Rocket Club, um more of our experienced rocketeers. Um, they, we we scored in the top one hundred in the state out of eight hundred teams. We were invited to nationals down in Washington DC a few weeks ago and uh they entered their rocket into the competition. It flew beautifully and you'll hear more about that from our students. And uh, we got to learn a lot and my my takeaway from the competition was that here we, here we are. We we made it to nationals and and usually when that happens, you, you know, if you made it to uh sections or you made it to states or you made it to nationals, you've competed against a lot of other teams. And we never competed against another team before. This was our first competition against other people who build rockets. And we got to learn so much. So uh, in a moment, I'll introduce the members, but you know, keep your eye on us. Things will be happening in the next couple of years. I I think we're going back. Uh, with us tonight, we have Vincent Cristofora, our president. We have Gavin Rice, Kai Caswell, and Nick Bodner. But we also brought with us Lucas Bruce, Juliana Farsenda, and Anthony Cristofora. Uh, my co-advisor is is Vince uh Vince Cristofora. All right, so I'll turn it over to them and they have parts of their experience that um that they want to report to you on. All right, so we're first gonna go to Vincent Cristofora. He'll talk about the congressional reception.
Hi, I'm I'm Vincent Cristofora. I'm the captain, captain of the uh the echo team, the Rocket Club. As one of the hundred teams that got to go, we applied for the Congressional Breakfast that was uh people, members of Congress and Senate. Unfortunately, they were in session, so there weren't many of them there. But uh, there, we were one of twenty-five teams. They were able to go at to the uh the Hart Senate Building in DC. Uh, one of the people that spoke there was NASA's Chief Technology Officer, AC Turania. Uh, I don't know if I pronounced that right, uh, but he he talked to us about how we are the the future for Mars exploration and other space exploration that might happen in the future. Uh, being there, we were able to walk around and talk to the other teams that were there. We we learned a lot being a first-year team at that went to finals and we learned a lot for next year. New ideas, new designs, stuff that will help us be better and help us make it a little further than we did this year.
Hello, I'm Gavin Rice. So after the breakfast, we went to the Boeing facility, the Aurora Boeing facility, and we saw a lot of prototype planes or UAVs, unmanned aerial vehicles. One of them we saw, sorry, was the Odysseus, which is one of the longest. It is the longest at two hundred forty-three feet in wingspan, which had to be contained in two different hangars in three parts. We also saw the Pegasus, which was a small plane that uh could carry one person at a time and was autonomous, could be controlled from the ground. And then on top of that, we saw a plane built with an engine that was a turbine, but with an generator, with an electric generator that could uh power it in the air. And we also had pizza, so. Thank you.
Um, I'm Kai Caswell and I'm gonna talk about the briefing that we had before launch day. Uh, I found it pretty stressful because this determined how high we were supposed to be flying, whether it be eight twenty-five or eight seventy-five. And we spoke to some of the teams at the Congressional Breakfast and they were mostly hoping for eight twenty-five. But as life usually goes, it was eight seventy-five. Um, and we also heard from an astronaut who is at the International Space Station right now, um Woody Hoberg, who participated in the first National American Rocketry Challenge. Um, and he didn't win, but he still made it up to space. So, um, po- we're hoping next year we can go back and with a bit more knowledge. And we were told basically that we are kind of the next step of uh space travel. Um, on Mars right now, they're using rockets not to like, not much bigger or smaller than what we flew, to transport samples from Mars to back to Earth. Um, that's about it.
I'm I'm back for the event day, the Saturday. Uh, one of the things that was different from what we usually do, uh, we we were separated. The the teams were not allowed to be, have any sort of interaction with any of the advisors during the rocket prep. We had a separate sectioned off area with members of National Association of Rocketry and TARC that were there at the uh American Rocketry Challenge. When we we were there, we had all of our tools with us and that's where we set the rocket. We got our egg, which they gave to us. Uh, we were so that you couldn't hard boil it or anything, trying to up your chances. They did some pre-flight checks and we went to a large field. Uh, the Great Plains is all, or the plains is also used for horse racing and that that's that's its main use, but we're allowed to use it for that event. Uh, for our, we we watched a ton of other teams launch their rockets. Some people did really good and other people had some malfunctions and were disqualified. Later that day, there were some high-power demonstrations. So in model rocketry, what we do is low power with uh the engine power, uh engine strengths will get you up to certain altitudes. And to go higher, you need special clearance and you have to take a an exam and that gets you your license. So there were a couple of high-power demonstrations with rockets that went up to uh over fifteen hundred feet that are over six feet tall, some of them. And for our launch, uh, we went to nine hundred twenty-two feet and came down in fifty-five seconds. So we were a little off of our target of eight hundred fifty, eight, sorry, eight hundred seventy-five feet and forty-two to forty-six seconds. But we ended up placing a sixty-second for the overall competition that day, which we think is uh extremely good for our first year going, especially being up against teams that have been there. Uh, I think the team from, other team from New York was there, I think, nine times before.
Uh, hi, I'm Nick Bodner and um I'm gonna talk about the Creative Lab. That was another part of the um Rocketry Challenge there. Um, basically what happened was um we were given seventy minutes with um a little baggie of supplies to come up with the most creative uh rocket that we could think of. Um, what happened was we made um, not this, but um it was a Stegosaurus that we'd come up with. Um, and we were short on time at the very few last minutes. Um, and uh, we were also beat by a train that was, it didn't look too good, but that's what the judges decided on. Yeah.
Good job, guys. Um, good evening. My name's Vincent Cristofora. I'm a nineteen eighty graduate of Antiora. I'm a licensed professional engineer and I've owned Woodstock Hardware for thirty years. And I'm co-advisor with Mr. Deruvo of the Rocket Club. We're extremely proud of these individuals for making the finals this year. The other three folks who aren't here tonight, Juliana, Anthony, and Lucas. Um, they performed at an incredible high level. And um, we had a great trip and it's not guaranteed that you get to go back every year, but they have it in their sights to uh return next year. I just want to take a minute and uh update you on a few other things that the Antiora Rocket Club is involved with and is doing. Um, we're currently working with two private donors who are setting up thousand-dollar graduation awards for Antiora for students who wish to pursue STEM education. And um, we're very proud that we've been able to bring that to the district um through the Rocket Club. Um, the club has five team members who are pursuing their Level One High-Powered Rocketry Certification. And as Vincent mentioned, uh, these certifications allow them to fly rockets to higher levels, requires them to get FCC clearance. Um, they will be studying over the summer and taking a national exam and then building a a larger rocket and flying that at a New York State certification site to get that license. And that license will help differentiate them as they pursue their education, their future education and career goals. So we're very excited that they're doing that. I'm happy to report that one of the members has been accepted into a summer aerospace engineering program at Syracuse University. And we hope that this person excelling this summer will open the door and allow us to bring other Antioch students there in the years to come as they're interested in pursuing those engineering fields. And lastly, I'm not sure everybody knows, but the Antioch Rocket Club is one of the few clubs and teams that meets every week all year long and given the, through the school year. And given the finals, the launch final competition schedule, we launch outside all winter, December through April, in the cold, in the snow. The club right now is currently involved with a fundraising program where we're going to purchase a cargo trailer and convert it into a mobile science lab so that we can use this lab to work inside at the launch site when they're preparing and working on the rockets, and also to house all our launch equipment that's required to conduct these safe launches. So we've almost reached our goal, and we plan on having this lab ready for September. We're working with somebody right now to try to partner to have the trailer outfitted with solar power so that we can also use it as a learning tool for all the students in the district and show them how solar power works and actually be able to put their hands on the parts. So those are things we have going on besides trying to qualify for Nationals again next year. To give you an idea, next year, the team has to design and build a rocket that goes to exactly 820 feet, will be connected all in one part, where this year, the rocket had to be in two parts. It'll have to be two different diameters. It'll have to have a flight time between 41 and 43 seconds, and has to carry one raw egg and not break. So, and as they mentioned, when they get to the competition, they change the height on them and require them to do, redo all their engineering to get to a taller, to a higher flight. So the biggest takeaway we've had, that I've had this year, is it's been amazing to watch these students learn that the bar is much higher on the national level. And when they get out there with the 100 best teams in the country who are competing to win, that they've really embraced this challenge and haven't shied away from it at all. And even on the way home, they're talking about, we need to get a CAD system so we can design our own custom parts, and we need a 3D printer, and we need to start working with new materials. So the students have really risen to the occasion, and we couldn't be happier with them. Thank you.
Do any of the trustees have questions for the Rocket Club? Before you guys go, I want to thank you because I know that you've put a tremendous amount of effort into fundraising to get the team to Washington. You did a fantastic job. And I want to just quickly acknowledge Diane Cristofora for helping a lot with that fundraising and making sure that everyone got there really safely. She did a fantastic job. Our trustee, Megan Ramondo, who also accompanied the team and went with you guys, and I'm sure provided a lot of love and support. And Max Ramondo, who was with you guys as well, I believe, right? Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you, guys, for terrific presentation, and best of luck next year.
Thank you. Are there questions? Before we take questions, I'd also personally like to thank the Transportation Department, the custodial staff, Principal Dodana, Principal Edelman. They've been very supportive. Plenty of other people that have helped us make this all happen. Woodstock, maintenance, what do you call that? The Launchpad that we have in, Highway Department in Woodstock for allowing us to use their The number of tree workers that have helped us retrieve some of our rockets. And there's just so many people, all the donors and everyone else that is, especially the Board of Ed and all the administrators, for all the support. It's really been quite an adventure, and having the Cristoforas on our side is a benefit for any team. And they've, they're amazing. So any questions? I'll try to direct you to the student who would probably be able to answer it.
Trustee Mitchell Morell.
How long has the Rocket Club been around, and how do those rockets fly?
This was our third year, and as far as, I'll allow you to step up if anybody wants to take that one.
Yeah, so I'm a sophomore here at Antioch, obviously. Sorry. So it's been around since I've been in seventh grade. So we took a break for COVID, couldn't meet then. But last year was our first year entering the competition. We placed 113th out of, so we were the alternate if any of the teams couldn't go that year. But they fly using a solid propellant motor that is made by, we use the ones made by AeroTech, and that has enough propellant in it to get us to the height that we need to go.
Thank you.
So who wants to go into space?
I think one of them mentioned it, and it's pretty eye-opening that when they were at these presentations in NASA, the head administrators and chief engineers were there, they look at these students and they say, you are the generation who are going to be the scientists and engineers who colonize Mars. So they, it's a very serious, you know, of course, we want you kind of approach, but they, they're fully expecting this generation to be that age to do that.
So how many eggs did you break?
During flights, we have had parachutes detach and other equipment break, which landed in a very hard crash. So we've broken three or four eggs by that. Some eggs just, we've actually kept them so long, they've gone bad and haven't been able to give us the right results we need, so then we have to get fresh eggs.
Thank you very much. Our fantastic student representative, Noel Crandell.
Hello. Hello? Yeah? So recently, in student government, students have been collecting 25 signatures from their peers to run for an elected position. So this year, 8th and 10th graders are currently running for president, vice president, treasurer, and secretary, as well as all grade levels are electing our new position of a class representative. Our elections will be this Thursday and Friday via Infinite Campus. Also, recently, we met with Victoria from Victoria Gardens to lay out the vision for the courtyard. We are waiting to finalize dates but are hoping to have a planting day before graduation. We would like this to be a community planting day, so we will be inviting a plethora of clubs as well as all of you to participate. So I'll keep you guys posted with finalized dates. Throughout the high school, the seniors had a very successful senior luncheon where the yearbooks were distributed. The Antioch Chamber Ensemble had a wonderful show at Maverick this past weekend. Many seniors went through the process of gaining their Seal of Civic readiness this past week. Last night was the athletic award ceremony. Congratulations to our athletes. Tomorrow night is the National Honor Society induction ceremony, where 22 new members will be inducted. Tomorrow night is also the senior scholarships award ceremony. Thank you to all of the donors who make these scholarships happen. I very much appreciate them. And many clubs are having their final meetings, and many students are taking their finals and finishing up the year.
Thank you so much, Noel. Does anyone have questions for Ms. Crandell? No? Okay, the superintendent will present district news.
Good evening. I wanted to call out, we received a note from Ulster Boses commending our ENL teacher, Dominique Fields, for leading the ELL, MLL Professional Learning Network for our ENL teachers in our county this year. The goal of this Professional Learning Network is to promote communication and collaboration among ENL and bilingual ed teachers across districts. This is the second year that Mrs. Fields has risen to the challenge of taking a leadership role in the county in addition to her normal teaching duties. It requires extra time and effort to prepare the agenda and run the meetings after school, and Boses wanted us to just know how much they value her commitment and expertise. Leading colleagues in collaborative discussion raises the level of teaching, learning, and community for all of us and benefits all of our students. As our illustrious student rep has just shared, the athletic awards were last night. It was really incredible to see how many of our students are dedicated student athletes, but even more incredible to see how many of our student athletes are also involved in so many other extracurricular activities. As Noel said, senior scholarship award ceremony is scheduled for tomorrow. Invitations have been sent out to all graduating seniors who will be receiving scholarships and awards, but is open to everyone. And it is always just incredibly amazing. There are over $500,000 in various awards and scholarships being provided by our community to support our graduating seniors. So we are very grateful and want to thank everyone who donates. Our community mentor program presentations will be this week on Thursday at 6:00 PM. They are always impressive, and our students share what they've learned as they have partnered with our community mentors who often donate their time or receive just a very nominal payment, which usually goes to providing materials for the programs. This week, we were here in Bennett, and we got to watch the Great Chocolate Milk Debate. We were able to watch our 5th grade students participate in the debate with the topic of whether chocolate milk should be offered in schools. Both sides of the argument were well represented, and our food services director was on the panel as a resource. The students presented well-researched arguments, and then they also answered questions from the audience, which included some of their peers and some family members. The Colonial Fair was here last week, and it was also a roaring success. The students at both sessions were incredibly well-prepared and well-spoken. It was a pleasure to go from table to table and learn from them. And then, of course, we had the power outage, but the Bennett Carnival was really a wonderful, wonderful event, and thank you to the PTA who really kind of hung in there and really wanted to give this event to the students and were able to. We are working with the New York State DOT to revise their project and relocate the crosswalk going from our campus across 28. Our Director of Facilities is planning to make a new sidewalk that will connect that in our parking lot to try and encourage safer walking across the street. He's also ordered new crosswalk signage. And I need to thank Liam Berthoud, who initiated this work and has made many suggestions and contributions, and I think it's going to result in enhanced safety for all of us. And I think everybody is aware that we are having just very serious air quality issues. So today, we had a discussion with our medical director, Dr. Woodley, regarding the air quality and kind of setting up benchmarks to guide how we will respond to air quality in the future, and how that will impact our activities, inclusive of recess, PE, and sports, based on the air quality designations that are on the state or the government website. So the benchmarks have been shared with all of our principals and will be used moving forward, and we will share them with everyone. And there are many end-of-year activities left at all of our buildings, so please attend as many as you can in order to celebrate our students and the work they have done all year. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Does anyone have questions for the Superintendent? Trustee Lynch?
Thank you, Superintendent. Just a question about the last comment. Glad you were able to meet with Dr. Woodley. Curious, this has come up before this apocalyptic day, and I'm just curious if there was any further detail you could share about those benchmarks. I remember with the Policy Committee, we talked about the need to have strong guidance for, you know, PE, which is, of course, mandatory versus, you know, recess or other things that aren't. I'm just curious if you could give us more detail.
Of course. So the Air Quality and Outdoor Activity Guidance for Schools that is published by airnow.gov rates air quality index by green, yellow, orange, red, and purple, being green is good, yellow is moderate, orange is unhealthy for sensitive groups, red is unhealthy, and purple is very unhealthy. With Dr. Woodley, we came up with that when it is green, we are all good. When it is yellow, which is air quality of 51 to 100, it's good to be active outside, but we should keep an eye on students who have sensitivity to air pollution. Between 101 and 150, which is orange, it's still okay to be active outside, but for short activities, such as recess and PE, but for longer activities, for practices, people really need to be monitored. And I think Assistant Superintendent Allison has also reached out to all of the nurses to ensure that we have appropriate asthmatic plans in place and are reviewing and making sure that we have all the appropriate medications on hand as well. The unhealthy zone of 151 to 200, we would have indoor recess and PE at 151. At 175, Dr. Woodley felt comfortable saying all districts should consider canceling athletic events. And so the other steps that we have taken are that Assistant Superintendent Allison has shared this with her PPS partners in other districts, and we have asked Dr. Woodley if he will also share this with our neighboring districts that he serves as the medical director for, because it's much better if we are all on the same page, so people aren't feeling like it's inconsistent across the county. Yep.
Are there any other questions for the Superintendent? Does the Board have any district news? Trustee Story?
Couple, last week, Trustee Bishop and Superintendent McLaren and myself attended the Ulster County School Boards Association Award that Antioch gave to our former nurse, Marsha Panza, from Woodstock, for everything that she's helped with us. So it was a great night to enjoy celebrating her and the other schools also around the county.
And I just want to recognize former trustee Taylor for suggesting that we give that award to Nurse Panza, because it was a fantastic idea, and certainly, she is incredibly deserving. Does anyone else have district news? Okay, do you guys want to take a break, or do you want to keep going? The Board appreciates hearing from the public, including students on any agenda or non-agenda item. Please understand that by our adopted parliamentary procedure, the Board can't engage in discussion or answer questions during public beheard. Please know that we hear you and take all of your comments into consideration. The Board does reserve the right to correct any inaccuracies or misinformation during public beheard. Please limit your comments to three minutes, be civil, and do not name any particular individuals or promote any commercial ventures or products. People wishing to express individual student or personnel concerns can bring them to the Superintendent's attention in private. Sierra Smith. Sierra Smith.
Hi. Is it working? Okay. So you already heard my name. My name is Sierra Smith. I'm a parent of two children, one grown out of the school, graduated a year ago, just finished her first year of college. And I'm a parent of a son who's in tenth grade. In two thousand twelve, parents were told enrollment has steadily declined and reconfiguration was needed, that a Princeton plan was selected to avoid consolidation and keep all buildings open. Children were shuffled all over the district to artificially fill buildings where enrollment was most lacking. The B O E insisted enrollment would increase despite projections showing a continuous decline. Enrollment did drop off drastically so by two hundred students since then. In less than two decades, there have been thirteen superintendents. It sure seems this constant costly turnover aligns with the power struggle to avoid the sensible centralization. Sadly, all our communities lost their K through six schools. And every community had every community had same household siblings split up. The only community to lose their youngest children was the town of Olive. The only community to be divided, splitting children apart from pre-K classmates, neighborhoods, neighborhood friends, and soccer friends. To prevent Phoenisha students from having a thirty to forty minute bus ride, many Olive students made hour-long bus rides and have been since. Numerous Olive children transitioned from Bennett to Phoenisha and then back to Bennett in a two-year period. I'm sorry, I don't usually speak. I don't know if I can, because then I wouldn't be high enough. I really don't ever speak, okay. Is it worth these sacrifices? Is it saving Chandakan children from having to do anything worse than what Olive children are having to do? If it were to bide time while enrollment increased, once again filling our buildings and justifying keeping them open, just maybe the sacrifice would be worth it. We've lost over two hundred students in a decade. Instead of recognizing a need to consolidate, previous board members increased all of sacrifices, pushing the Phoenisha border year after year after year, further into Olive and outer and other outlying communities in order to artificially fill the outlying school building. Finally, we had a board majority and a superintendent recognize the enrollment decline and acknowledge a need to work proactively toward a centralizing consolidation plan that is the most sensible and equitable of difficult solutions to the entire radius of the district. But a community advocacy group played on emotions of our communities, pitting communities against one another by implying villages have more love and sense of community than towns without villages in them, demonizing responsible officials for a difficult choice made, inciting fear in families of a mega campus with crowded classrooms. Worst of all, false promises are being made to the entire population of our district. People went to the polls voting or to vote asking which candidates are keeping our schools open. Okay, is my time up?
Mr. Wolf?
Good evening. I'm Rick Wolf, but this is from Cindy O'Connor, who just sent me this email and asked me to read it tonight. My name is Cindy O'Connor, not really. I'm a passboard member, longtime community member of the Antioa School District. I'd like to thank Emily Sherry for all she does for the community, the dedication, the personal sacrifice that she has made for the community over the last three years. Being a board member is a thankless job. I want to congratulate the new board members, Emily and Clark. Can I say their name? I guess as a passboard member, I have some words of advice. Sitting on this side of the table is very different than sitting on that side of the table. There's a learning curve. Research, research, and research. Before you make changes, what is, what is not, and what should be. You think you can, there is a lot a board member cannot do. Learn your boundaries. Everyone loves you when you vote the way they want, but the minute things get tough, you need to do what is right for the entire district. A board member is very, has very specific responsibilities. Strategic governance and oversight of all the stakeholders of the community to operate at ten thousand feet. I thought it was thirty thousand, but. You serve all the organization's stakeholders, not just two thousand twenty-one people that voted in the election. We have over twelve thousand registered voters. You manage a budget, you set policies, you set goals, and then you measure the goals and achievements. I'm not here tonight to beat up on declining enrollment or closing schools. That's for July and beyond. I'm here to tell you, do your research. You must look at passboards, what passboards have found, what experts have been hired, suggested, what your superintendent and business manager are telling you. Clark, you say you're a numbers guy. I challenge you to prove it. We're going to hold you to it. I worry, I heard you say that there seems to be a lot more love for Phoenisha than Bennett. That could hurt you, Clark. That's not a numbers guy. I think you know what you must do. Meet the candidates tonight. Let the numbers tell you. Emily, you ran for the school board to keep Phoenisha open. I'm not sure what to think. There is not the same community attachment to Bennett. There's no way to make a sound, solid decision for the entire district. Your mandate is do the right thing for the entire district, not just for the loudest in the district. We'll be watching. And as many of you know, I do come to school board meetings, so.
Ms. Conges?
I'm not a good speaker either, so. I'm the parent, I'm Becky Conges. I'm the parent of an Antioa graduate and a ninth grader. There's been a lot of talk lately about closing Bennett Elementary as part of some of our newly elected board members and the anonymous Open Group that aims to control them. There's also been an apparent about face by Open saying they aren't in favor of closure and only want the board to look at other options. To be clear, any other options effectively close Bennett Elementary. This intention is still crystal clear. Repurposing Bennett as district transportation office or closing is is closing Bennett Elementary, trading a two-thirds empty Phoenisha for an almost completely empty office building. Moving the middle school to Bennett is also closing Bennett Elementary, trading a two-thirds empty Phoenisha for a half-empty high school. We don't need to trade empty space for more empty space. We need to thoughtfully utilize what we have in a way that benefits the greatest number of students. Bennett is our most central elementary and our original community elementary with the greatest number of students in its radius. Closing it or repurposing it makes absolutely no sense, especially if our enrollment continues to decline as projected. And one last point, our district is obviously facing some serious challenges. Consensus and consistency are key in these situations. I urge you all to come together, along with the superintendent, to make a plan that benefits the district as a whole, not just certain people. Having had, I think it was twelve, thirteen superintendents over the last nineteen years, we need to, we need to start working together, have consistency. Please work together. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Doughton?
Okay. I'm here to address a pressing issue that has been hindering our mission to unite this school district. And that is the divisive role social media is playing in this conversation that we're having. In the wake of the recent election and the big decisions that our community has faced, I'm reminded of the proverb, "If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together." The issues that confront us right now, specifically the potential closure of our village schools, called not for speed, but for unity through dialogue and above all, a commitment to go far together. On May sixth, I posted a message on Nextdoor, which swiftly ignited extensive community conversation. It drew comments from parents, taxpayers, teachers, and current board members, as well as past board members, accumulating to around two hundred and ninety-eight responses in the run-up to the election. I was left wondering, why is this important dialogue happening here and not in person? I was left, it's, this is the kind of open exchange we've been seeking. Facts, figures, suggestions, opinions, so much conversation, yet it felt totally unfulfilling and exhausting to do this in a digital context. The conversation descended into sarcastic remarks and uncompassionate back and forth that frankly left me depleted and frustrated. Instead of coming together, we had moved apart on these platforms, which often, too often, morph from social connecting into arenas of insensitivity and disrespect. In this heated debate, extreme voices on both ends have unfortunately been the loudest, drowning out the moderate voices seeking consensus. It's crucial that we understand decorum and find common ground in the center, fostering an atmosphere of peace and productive conversation. Let's not forget that each digital profile represents a real person, a neighbor, a community member, or a tired parent or caregiver. So let's bring the conversation back to our shared mission, which is the well-being and educational success of our children. Our new board members bring with them a promise of a more open dialogue, of seeking alternative strategies and fostering a more inclusive approach. Let's take the conversation offline and plan to meet face-to-face in town halls and public forums. Let's sit down together, parents and educators, board members, community members, to discuss, deliberate, and deliver. Let's foster an atmosphere of mutual respect and active listening, a platform for constructive dialogue and shared decision-making. We know our village schools are more than buildings. As we consider their fate, let's also consider the kind of community we want to create. Do we want a community divided by quick decisions and hurtful words on social media or a community united by?
Ms. Osmond?
Hi. I wanted to just go through a few things from board policy as well as board norms and guidelines for board behavior. First of all, Board Policy four-two-one-two is an organizational chart. It has community at the top. Below that, there is a line to the board. Below that, there is a line from the board to the district clerk, the school attorney, the superintendent of the schools, the district and the district treasurer, plus auditors, receiver of taxes, and central treasurer. So I just wanted to stress that at the top of the org chart, the community remains, and this is an important thing for board members to remember, I believe. Excerting from the N I S B A, New York State School Boards Association School Board Member Handbook, "As a school board member, you are a representative of your community and you are a leader of your district. You are a steward, both of your district's children and its tax dollars, and you are an advocate for all students' public education and an educated public. You are the link between the school district and the community. School board members are trustees, responsible for trust established with the community. The primary consideration is the tangible impact the decision you will have on your district's students. Community members are both the district's owners and its clients. They pay for the district's products and services and incorporate its graduates. Keep in mind that people support what they help create. To represent your community, your first task is to identify the groups and subgroups that together compose your community. Of course, all board members should make opportunities to converse with people throughout the community about district education. Listening is key. How do you bridge a gap between the community and the board? Most gaps result from poor communication. Remember that communication is a team sport. Both parties must have the opportunity to speak, both must actively listen. To represent your community, your first task is to identify the groups and subgroups that together compose your community. The cardinal rule in building support for public education is to invite input and treat the public with respect. Policy one-five-one-oh, board meetings. The district clerk shall notify the members of the Board of Education in advance of each regular meeting. Such notice in writing shall include an agenda and the time of the meeting. When a meeting is scheduled less than a week in advance, the board shall provide or electronically transmit public notice. Once the agenda is set, items will not be added unless, oh, sorry, this is policy one-five-one-one. Once the agenda is set, items will not be added unless the item is of an emergency nature and authorized by the superintendent in consultation with the board president. In addition, the agenda will be released to the news media, including local newspapers, radio stations, and television stations in advance of the meeting. And excerpting from board norms, which you probably all have either handed to you or memorized, ensure there is adequate time for board members. Okay, I won't finish, but please do review your board.
Ms. Bryant?
Hello, Stephanie Bryant. Thank you, board members, and thank you for everyone at home watching, not in this room. And thank you for everyone in this room. And thank you for everyone who will be watching this on YouTube. I want to put into the public record a letter written by Town Supervisor Bill McKenna. Dear Antioa School Board and Superintendent McLaren, I've closely followed the discussions about the Antioa School District's plans for reconfiguration due to a failing student population. I was dismayed to learn the school board voted on short notice to close Phoenisha and Woodstock schools in the coming years. This seems a rash decision to a problem being faced by communities all over the country as populations ebb and flow and demographics change. The Woodstock school sits at the entrance of our town. I consider it a sign that Woodstock is a great place to raise a family, a cohesive and creative community, that one that cares about our children. In a time of uncertainty in the world, we need more parental and community involvement in the schools, leading to more ways feeling connected to each other. Closing community schools should be a last resort. Schools, especially elementary schools, are at the heart of towns and hamlets. They are the anchor institutions for everyone who lives in the town. Keeping elementary schools as local as possible has been shown to be important in rural areas as well as in cities. Children thrive when they feel safe and connected and are part of the community, a neighborhood, among concerned and engaged family members and friends. Over the past few years, Woodstock Over the past few years, Woodstock has seen an influx. We've seen a pre-pandemic increase to our population of over ten percent. A good number of these folks came with young children who will reach school age soon. Many moved here because of our vibrant local elementary school. And we want to attract full-time families who live in our town. This makes for a healthy, thriving, diverse community. It is heartbreaking to drive by the West Hurley School. It used to be the center of the hamlet. It's been empty and decaying since two thousand and four. What a shame it is it would be to see that sad scene repeated in Woodstock and Phoenisha. I don't want that for either town, and it seems you don't want that either. I understand the results of the recent school board survey overwhelmingly favored keeping the schools open. I understand in many ways. This comes down to tax dollars and cents. As supervisor, I'm faced with similar decisions.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please state your name. Your full name, if you don't mind.
My name is Molly Holm. I live in Matt Tremper. I grew up here. I went to both Woodstock and Phoenisha and Antioa. I don't have children, though, and I haven't paid much attention to what goes on in these school systems, which I feel bad about, and I'm glad I'm doing it now. I just wanted to add my experience of being a nurse who took a disabled kid to school in Germantown from second grade through eleventh grade. I know it's I know it's different circumstances, but they are a K through 12 school in one building. My experience with that is, um, it was really good for the kids to all grow up together. You had the disabled, kids with disabilities, with Bosie's kids, with kids with money, poorer kids, different races, and they all knew each other from when they were little all the way up through 12th grade. And it, I think it was really good to create that sense of community for them. I had a hard time moving from Woodstock to Phoenisha back in the eighties. It was a very different types of kids, and I really struggled with that. And I think the future is getting harder, and I think we have to kind of walk into it bravely. We have to make hard choices, but I think we should think about the positivity that can come out of a central campus for the kids. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Mr. Smith? Please state your name when you get to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Teresa Falkowski. I'm a licensed real estate salesperson in Phoenisha. And while I'd like to talk about the shift we're seeing in the market for the district to receive more full-time families and the enrollment that has already started taking place, I think my time tonight is better spent pointing out the enormous amount of spending that we are voting on tonight, or you are voting on tonight. If you add this up, it looks like the board is voting to spend over 10 million tonight. I'm sure I'm not the only one in the district that has some concerns. Number one, if we've already voted to close schools, shouldn't the district be consolidating administrative staff? There is no reason to lock in three assistant superintendents for over five, or for five-year contracts at the salaries listed of 155,000 to 175,000 with 50 days paid leave, generous health benefits, and pensions when these contracts are not up for renewal, and we are downsizing the number of schools that we have. Number two, I see the bid from the architecture and engineer company for over $633,000 to drop the capital improvement project. How many other bids were received, and what were they? This was the only one listed, and I don't think it should be awarded without other bids for the project. Number three, this project in the outline is unclear which buildings the rooms of 102, 104, 105, and 107 are in. Is this 8 million, 8.8 million expenditure going to address some of the five-year capital facility plan? If so, which parts are included and which are not? The public doesn't know which classroom numbers are in which buildings and which projects this expenses are going to cover or not cover. Four, are any priority one items for Woodstock or Phoenisha Elementary going to be addressed? Or because of the scheduled closures, are these things just not going to be addressed, leaving the buildings to rot? You can't rent or sell a building with a leaking roof or some of the other high priority items listed on the repairs unless you are going to offer it at a significant discount. And just for example, if you look at LoopNet.com right now, you can see the West Hurley building is currently listed at $850,000. I know about cabins in Woodland Valley that are selling close to that price. Is this what Phoenisha and Woodstock schools are facing for their future? Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
All right, thank you. My name is Rory Smith, and I'd just like to finish up my White Sierra Smith's letter here. She was talking about having a board and a superintendent that finally was able to make the hard decisions. She had said, "Worst of all, false promises are being made to the entire population of our district. People went to the polls to vote, asking which candidates are keeping our schools open." And the resounding message was that the new candidates would do just that. Yet, according to the open group, the very first, yeah, the very first agenda of the newly elected is to put school consolidations options, all involving school closures, right back on the table. I call on the newly elected to act on behalf of the entire community and to truly take the time to achieve a full concept of our entire district. I call on you to thoroughly review the studies and research that outlines why centralization was selected to best serve our district. Please think about what you are saying. Are you saving a building? Are you further, or are you further, furthering a divide by saving a community that you believe is most important? Or do you want to go down in history for unifying a district and all that, the student body within it, and all of the student body within it? So, I guess we will leave it there. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No? Moving on. The board hereby approves item numbers 11.02 to 11.15. May I have a first, please? Trustee Ramondo, second trustee Bishop. Questions or comments from the board? I've reviewed the schedule you in. It appears to be in order. Any other questions or comments from the board? No? Trustee Lynch? To vote, please.
Aye.
Trustee Bishop?
Aye.
Emily Mitchell Morell?
Aye.
Ms. Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Yes.
Trustee Goodrich?
Yes.
Okay, that is unanimous. District Clerk, thank you. The board hereby approves item numbers 12.02 to 12.06. May I have a first, please? Trustee Ramondo, second. Trustee Story? Page seven. Questions or comments from the board? No? Trustee Lynch?
Yes, thank you. Just wondered if there were other, um, yes, if there were other, an item, excuse me, sorry, 12.05, wondered if there were other candidates that were considered?
No, there weren't really, no. Dr. Christensen graciously offered to continue working with us in spite of what I would consider to be a difficult year. He is also continuing to work with Superintendent McLaren, which means that it makes absolute sense for the board to retain him to continue working with you over the course of the next year. And that's one of the reasons to put it up for a vote. But no, I mean, Dr. Christensen, I would say, did a fantastic job. He came whenever he was asked to. He met regularly with trustee Bishop and I. He was available for questions from all board members. He spent hours and hours with each of us. He spent hours with Superintendent McLaren. He has been a wealth of knowledge and has helped us, I think, really understand the process over the last year. And actually took a board that was brand-new and somewhat divided and helped us all kind of come together last year to make some really important decisions. So I would, the short answer is no, but yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I was just curious what the process is. Is it typically the officers of the board that would make those decisions? Okay, and then you said that he would be available to individual board members? Does that include others outside of the officers?
Yeah, I mean, I-
For individual professional development is what I'm seeking, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I mean, Bill, Dr. Christensen would have to address that himself, but for sure, part of our discussions with him was, you know, are you available if a board member wants to run something by you? And he is completely available to do that, remembering, though, that you also have access to your NISBA representatives and attorneys. But Dr. Christensen has a wealth of knowledge when it comes to superintendencies, as well as board management, board growth and development, and board norms, more than anyone else I've ever met, actually. Anyone else? Trustee Story?
Seeing that I've been here the longest out of anybody, I think Dr. Christensen has actually helped us the most out of any facilitator that the board has used in the past. And he's open to us be able to get questions and be another resource for us, so. And I've, I've learned something every single time I've gone to a retreat with him. I've learned something, and after doing this for eight years, I'm still learning. So he's a valued asset to our district.
I mean, I would also say, speaking very frankly, that you guys have a tough road ahead. And taking on any potential resources that you can muster would be my goal if I were staying. I think that any possibility that you have for doing good work and coming together as a unified group in the best interest of the children and the district, primarily the children, means that you should work with whoever is willing to work with you from a consultancy perspective, who does good work. And Dr. Christensen does good work. So yes, it is absolutely my recommendation. I cannot imagine you moving forward without him. And I am glad that we're going to vote on this tonight. Any other questions? No? Okay, we're going to roll call vote. Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Bishop?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morell?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Can I take a moment to just go back to 11.13 and just recognize and thank all of the people who donated? We usually call them out, the donations. And the list is lengthy and incredibly, incredibly awesome. And we are so grateful for all of the support from all of these people and our community for our students. So I wanted to make sure that we recognize that.
Thank you, Superintendent. Absolutely, that is an incredible gift that our community gives to our children. And they will use that to go really far. And it's a, it's an incredible start, and I would imagine Noel's going to be up on that stage a few times this week.
Probably.
Okay. Do you guys want to take a break? Yep, we're going to take a five-minute break. Yep, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Okay, do we have any committee reports? Ad hoc? No? Communications?
Communications? We had a meeting.
We had a meeting, sure.
I'm happy to report that we did have a meeting, and we've invited, or we were glad to hear that Trustee Story is interested in joining our next meeting, which we appreciate, and we're also have invited our BOSI's colleagues to attend a meeting this summer after reorg, so that we can start to think about the, some of the communications plans and different ways of sharing our updates with the community. Based on the last meeting, you recall, Trustee Sheri, you were asking about ways in which we could get better two-way communication happening within the district. So, just to say it's in motion. Invite Trustee Bishop to add anything.
I think you got, you got it all.
Facilities, anything, anybody else? No?
You've got, Trustee Bishop?
Yeah, just a quick update on Audit Committee, we met recently, a couple weeks ago, the full committee was there, and we also invited Trustee Mitchell Morell, it'll take me a few minutes to get that one, and Trustee Goodrich, and they came, and Mike Rossi was there, he is our external auditor, and he basically just walked us through, you know, the whole external auditing process, and I thought that was really informative, I hope you guys found it interesting, I know it can be a little heady, all those numbers. And the Policy Committee, we meet monthly, pretty much regularly, and review lots of policies every single time we meet, I guess that's about it, I don't have any actual policy numbers to report on. Anything, Trustee Lynch, or, Trustee, we meet Monday, right? Uh, yeah, yep. And at the, at the reorg meeting, we'll discuss, you know, all the committees and, you know, there might be some shifting, and we'll add new trustees to polit, to committees at that time.
Does the Board have any old business?
New business?
Okay.
Any old business? Anyone? Okay, before we start new business, well, as new business, we're going to vote on a resolution. Be it resolved that if Section 75 charges are filed against employee zero six zero six two zero two three, the Board does hereby appoint Ronald Longo Esquire as Hearing Officer to preside over the disciplinary hearing and to issue findings and a recommendation on all disciplinary charges preferred against employee zero six zero six two zero two three, including any amended charges that may be presented at the disciplinary hearing. May I have a first please? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Bishop? Any questions or comments from the Board? No? Okay, roll call vote. Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Bishop?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morell?
Aye.
Trustee Armando?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous, thank you. Is there any other new business for the Board? Trustee Mitchell Morell?
I have a question about the meeting on May twenty-fourth, there was no public notice, no agenda, and I was summoned to it, since then, I haven't received any minutes to approve. I contacted the New York State Committee on Open Government, and the professional I spoke to there agrees it was held in a manner inconsistent with the requirement of the open meeting law. I just want to know why there were no minutes and why there was no public record of the meeting.
There was notice sent out, minutes would be the next Board meeting, oh, the retreat? Or is the re- Or, wait a sec, are you talking about the twenty-fourth when we met with Dr. Bill Christensen? That was a retreat, retreats do not need to be posted on, for public knowledge, we are meeting with a consultant, and that's, that is completely legal for open meetings law, for having a retreat. It's not where we have Board business, we just, we don't discuss Board business there, we discuss educational and bettering ourselves, that's, and team building, that's what retreats are for, not for Board norms, is what this topic was done, and there is no, there is no first, second, there is no opening, there's no, there's discussion, there's no voting or anything.
Are you referring to the retreat? I'm just, just want to be clear.
I never had heard it called a retreat, but I guess that's what we're calling it.
If that was the, the day that we met with Dr. Bill?
A lot of things happened, but yes, that happened also.
Was there another meeting, I'm, I'm just curious if there was another meeting besides the meeting with Dr. Christensen? Okay, right, so that was definitely a retreat, that was a Board retreat, and when we meet with a consultant, we, we always call it a retreat, sorry that, if we were not specific.
Any other new business? Trustee Story, no? Trustee Goodrich, anything? No? Okay, does anyone have a request of information from the Superintendent? Trustee Story?
When we were at the, um, when we were at the dinner for the Friends of Education Award, we turned around and we were listening to the others, other presentators, other award recipients getting it, and something that I heard that brought, that made me think more about is the woman that, from Sawgertys who won the award, that was given the award from Sawgertys School District was part of their Community Capital Project Review Committee. And I would like Superintendent McLaren to contact Sawgertys Superintendent and get some more information, because they have just recently, they're going through a capital improvement plan to do construction, and I'm wondering what this committee is like, so we could possibly turn around and do this, because I think, this is probably old business, but ad hoc committee, I think we should have a meeting come up, so the ad hoc can discuss what, where we're going with the stuff that's, but I'd like that as a request from information, and I also want to, when I first started on the Board, the request for information, it was not just asking a question that a Board member wanted to know more information, it was more geared towards stuff that is in the Board's purview, and I've, the last couple of days have received emails that they're asking questions, RFI's, that are not Board, that's not Board topic or Board purview. So, I think we need to do more, um, just, we need to be more succinct of what we're asking and make sure it's Board business, and not just because I want to know the answer to this question, that's not what it is.
I'd like to take a quick redirect back to old business, and I'm going to say that the NISBA attorneys are available to you, if you have questions like that, that's who you would reach out to, because the open meeting attorney that you spoke to, or whoever you spoke to at open meetings, may not have direct knowledge of how a New York State School Board works. There are very few reasons that School Board members can get together as a group and talk, and a retreat is a hundred percent one of them, and your NISBA attorney could have answered that question for you in a way that whoever you spoke to would maybe not have any knowledge of. And additionally, I would really encourage our new members to get their training done, because I think it's an imperative. Anybody else have an RFI? Go ahead.
Just, just to follow up on that, Trustee Sheri, can you advise how we would contact the NISBA attorneys, is that, is there a specific person, or is there a process for the-
You all have access to the NISBA website, you should have all been on it many, many times by now, there's a ton of information on there, it was also in your training as to who you contact for what. The NISBA website is an endless resource for every trustee, and it tells you exactly who your representatives are and how to contact them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? First to adjourn, Trustee Story, second, Trustee Bishop?